Our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by our kindergarten students and Dr. House Elementary School, Nico Parrish, Joshua Goodman, Lena Half, Piper Jeffers, Landon Morgan, Iliana Berd- Burd- Berdelli, and Ben Lynn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That our poor president had a personal matter that involved his family and he's going to be with us via telephone this evening.
Mr. Peterson, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay.
Hey, John, we have the roll call, please.
Yep. Mr. Baradelli?
Here.
Mr. Bickert?
Here.
Mr. Bobalino?
Here.
Mrs. DeKetch?
Here.
Mrs. Hill?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Peterson? Mr. Peterson, are you there?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Yates?
Here.
All present in town.
I'd like to welcome the visitors this evening, and you are welcome to address the board concerning agenda items at the time the board discusses them, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Executive session, there were none, and this week we did have an athletic committee meeting. There is one revision to our agenda, and that's new business DD. Hopefully, you all picked that up in the back. Approval of minutes, number one, approve amended minutes from December 16th, 2019 voting session, item V, period J, amended to include with continued employment after the last student day of the 2022-2023 school year to be contingent upon having obtained a PA certification for elementary grades four through eight. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number two, January 20th, 2020 voting session, approval of those minutes, do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we have invoices for approval, number one, the general fund listed dated January Number two, the general fund listed dated February 17th, 2020, $495,798.41. Activities fund listed dated January 31st, 2020, $5,213. Number four, activities fund listed dated February 17th, 2020, $5,832.8. And number five, cafeteria fund listed dated February 17th, 2020, $43,635.46. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the treasurer report of January 2020, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have presentations from our future business leaders of America along with our JROTC. So we'd like the future business leaders of America, if you could come forward.
Wherever you want, you can stand, you can sit, whatever makes you comfortable.
You can dance.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for giving us opportunity to talk today. My name is Lori Guandolo, I'm a high school business teacher here at the high school, and also the FBLA advisor. We started our chapter back in November of 2017, and we've had a lot of success that we'd like to share with you guys this evening. Couple of things, if you're not familiar with FBLA, it is the largest and oldest career student business organization in the world. Right now, there are over 250,000 members worldwide. Benefits of being in FBLA, there's a lot. Our members learn valuable business leadership skills, we've earned a lot of awards and scholarships, and I'll talk about those in a minute. We're able to connect with business professionals through field trips, and we have guest speakers come to our class, and we're able to participate in a lot of community service. We've traveled to exciting places for conferences and workshops, we've been to Kalahari over in the Poconos, we've traveled to Hershey several times, we actually went to the national conference in Baltimore a couple of years ago. So it's given us a lot of opportunity to travel and see different cultures, allows us to gain insight into future career paths, a lot of these students are really starting to get an interest in a particular field that they want to pursue. And of course, they've had a lot of fun, and they've made memories while they've been able to travel and have all these experiences. So I wanted to start talking about a few things that we've done, and then I'll let my members continue. So right now, we have a coat drive that we're doing with onewarmcoat.org, one of our members decided to do that as a community service project. We have boxes set up at all of the elementary schools, including at the junior or middle school, high school, and as of Friday, we're shocked, but we have collected over 100 coats. We have over $90 in monetary donations, the turnout has been incredible. We still haven't gotten the box from College Square, so who knows how many are in there, but it was very successful, and I want to thank the community members for being so generous. The FBLA has a state project every year, last year was Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, this year it's American Heart Association. Right now, we are selling pink, no, red hearts and little plastic bracelets for donations, and then when we're done doing that, we'll turn all the money over to American Heart Association. We're actually gonna, I guess, have a spotlight on one of our students at the Mr. Beaver High Competition this Thursday, Shannon Watauski, she is actually a two-time heart survivor, she's had several surgeries, so we're gonna focus her on the Mr. Beaver High Competition, and again, hopefully we'll have a lot more donations to pass on to the American Heart Association at that time. So I'd like to pass it over to two of my members to talk about some other things we do at FBLA.
Hi, my name is Will Lamb, I joined FBLA this year just because I heard it was a good thing for your college application. I've had a very cool experience from it, but I'm here to talk to you about competitive events, so a lot of people know about the community service we do, but a lot of people don't know about the competitive events we do. So what happens is each member is required to choose an event that somehow involves business, I believe there's about 60 events to choose from, and you can either compete as an individual or as a team, and either do an objective test, which is just a test on a computer, or present in front of judges, and then, once you are either judged or take your test, which all occurs in, I believe, early December, once you do go through that whole process, they rank like everyone in the region, and you go to the RLC, the Regional Leadership Conference, which this year was held in the feds, at the feds in Hope Well, and there's a lot of schools in our region that go there, very large schools like North A, Mars, Fox Chapel, CB, so no like, like no bad competition is a great way to put it, but we had nine people qualified to go to states in April, which means that we had nine people placed in the top three of their event, so I mean, none of them, we were supposed to have a few other people come tonight, but right now, the only one here, I got first in securities and investments, so I'm qualified to go to Hershey for that, but we had nine others as well. The only issue with that, as cool as that is, is it takes a lot of money to fund the trips out there to Hershey with the boarding, through the transportation, so we're just asking for your consideration to looking for funds for trips such as that, so that we can represent our school at the state, and if we do well there, we can even go to the national competition, which is held at Salt Lake City.
It changes every year, yeah.
But this year is in Salt Lake City, Utah, so that's what we've gone on with that.
If you had to ask for a specific dollar amount for assistance, what would that be?
I'm really, I don't have three, number on that list.
The kids who are going this year, anywhere from $400 to $500.
Her?
Her.
How many are going?
Four right now, they have already paid, payment was due.
Okay.
But we do a lot of fundraising too, so.
So yeah, are there any other questions with that? All right, well, I'll pass it off to Drew then.
Hi, I'm Drew DiFrancesco, and I'm here to talk to you about some of the community service that we've done in FBLA. Ms. G handles a lot of the like organization for the community service, and she suggested to me and my colleague Jacob Dango that we do some things at Center at the Mall, which is, you know, and kind of a place that a lot of elderly people go to to do recreational things and take classes and such, and she recommended that we called Center at the Mall, so we actually called them and set up an appointment to teach a technology class at Center at the Mall. And we taught two classes, and they were pretty brief in their explanation, but then we had a two-hour Q and A afterwards, after we taught a couple of things on, one class was just like basic technology, and the other one was cybersecurity, and we had a lot of success with that, tons of people came with their issues, and there were lots of other people who did really important stuff for their community service through FBLA, and I think we learned a lot from the community service.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Megan Chulas, and I would be briefing you guys on what the JRTC program has been doing in February, and what we're looking forward to in February. Very early on, and on February 3rd, we had our annual, well, three, every three years we have our JPA inspection, where we decide whether or not we can keep our Gold Star, which is our honorary unit with distinction, I'm glad to tell you that we did maintain our honorary unit with distinction. On February 14th, our academic excellence team, otherwise known as our J-Lab team, competed in the second phase competition for their academic scoring, and we, I think we got our scores back, and we'll find out soon whether or not we move on to our third phase, which is pretty big for us, because we haven't really moved on to even phase two in a while. On February 13th, we had the curriculum night, we had a table set up with several different cadets in different uniform, and we had information about all of our teams, and so we had cadets, five or six cadets there presenting and talking to students and parents. And then coming up this Saturday, February 22nd, we have our league drill competition with several competing schools, we have Butler, Alba Gallatin, Seneca Valley, Trinity High School, and Valley High School, and that will be held on Saturday morning, and that will decide who is the winner of the league drill competition. If there are no questions, I will pass it on to Cadet Wilson.
My name is Katie Wilson, I am the Alpha Company Commander, and I was gonna brief you guys on what we have upcoming in March. Not much really, but on March 4th, we will be having our parent support group meeting, so we encourage all parents who want to be more involved with the program, want to know what we are doing in the program, or parents that are curious to learn about JRTC, we encourage as many parents that can come as possible. And then, the main thing of March is we'll be having our league raider competition, so we'll be going up against Butler, Seneca Valley, Valley, Trinity, and Connelsville, and we have won the raider competition the past couple of years, and if we win this, we'll be able to move on to Brigade, which is in Fort Dix, New Jersey, so we've been preparing for that. Other than that, there's not much else we have going on in March, just preparing for the Military Bowl, which will be on April 25th, and if there are no further questions, I'll pass it on to the Sergeant Major.
All right, morning work hours, Sergeant Major Weaver with the JRTC program, he already touched on a couple of the things that I just wanted to briefly, the Military Bowl is gonna be held on April 25th, we had to move it back a week, there was some conflict with some other, some other stuff that shadowed it for everyone, so we're good with April 25th, we have the senior trip that's sometime in April as well, so got a lot of things written planned right now, and we will have a change of command ceremony this year, I don't think that we've ever done that before with this program, it's an opportunity for our current leadership command to pass the baton, so to say, but in front of the whole town, and there'll be invites going out for that as well, so that's just down to dirty what we've been going on, this may go on the last couple of months, the year's gonna be quickly, can't believe it's almost over, but.
I want to congratulate you on keeping your Gold Star status, I know you put a lot of work into that.
Very special. We still have, we have a supply portion that's coming on, that is something to be done this week on Wednesday, but we'll be fine on that one, that's the easy part.
Fantastic, thanks for coming out tonight, I know you guys have another event to go to, so thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
Okay, on to new business, A, authorize the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as independent financial advisor, Dinsmore &amp; Scholl as bond counsel, and the district solicitor to proceed with the issuance of general obligation bonds or notes, the proceeds of which will be used toward the current refunding of all or a portion of the district's outstanding series of 2014 bonds via a dual-track competitive process with a minimum net savings target of $25,000. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, B, authorize the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as independent financial advisor, Dinsmore &amp; Scholl as board counsel and the district solicitor to proceed with the issuance of general obligation bonds in the approximate par amount of $9,500,000, the proceeds of which will be used toward new money for capital improvements of the district via a competitive internet auction. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Denise, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can I ask John a couple of questions?
Sure.
John, are you able to hear me, sir?
Yep.
Excellent, so I don't want to overgeneralize, but is it fair to say that, without pointing fingers at any individual or group of people, that when you came into your current position, the physical infrastructures of our school were in varying states of disarray, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, second, 9.5 million, if given your, if you given your drawthers, if given a blank check, we have well in excess of 9.5 million in capital projects debt we have kind of on the back burner, is that also fair?
Yes.
Okay, and then lastly, in your professional opinion, have we seen a more advantageous time to issue new debt with respect to the borrowing costs for a public school district such as ours, have we seen a better time than where we are currently from an interest rate perspective?
No, the interest rates are at all-time historic low, and the yield curve is flat, which means you can borrow at nearly the same rate as short-term.
Excellent, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? C, approve. Okay, let's have a roll call vote for that.
Mr. Baradelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bickert?
Yes.
Mr. Bobalino?
Yes.
Mrs. DeKetch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Nels.
C, approve the 60-month fair market value lease agreement with Delayed Land and Financial Services LLC at a monthly price of $1,862, inclusive of a $150 per month paper cut software license for six new Kyler Sarah copiers to replace existing leases on used Xerox copiers, one in the middle high school, three at Dutchridge Elementary, and two at College Square. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? I'm sorry. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm not against this, I just, I would like us to keep money, money in the county, we can do that, John, that's all, like, I'm sorry, keep the money in the county when we can, keep the money local, we can do that, I know we're going outside of the county for this money, but there are a lot of copier companies in the, in the local area, you could probably find one of those, maybe next time, or something else, I just, it's best to keep our money here locally when we can, it's just, I think, who's all of us, so, that's all I can complain about, I'm voting for, I'm just, that's all I can complain about, that's all.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, D, approve the 60-month maintenance agreement with access business consultants for approximately $2,663.51 per month, based on historical volumes of existing six used Xerox copiers, to be replaced by six new Kyler Sarah copiers with one in the middle high school, three at Dutchridge Elementary, and two at College Square Elementary. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, John, can you just, I know we talked about this in the work session, but, so this is, we're gonna lease the printers, and then this company's gonna come in and we're worth paying this amount of money just to come in and maintenance them every month?
We're actually paying them per copy, .007 per black and white and .05 dollars, so it'd be five cents and seven tenths of a cent for black and white, that, based on historical volume, it adds up to that amount of money, but the paper cut software, we should come in and we got, we're wasting paper like that.
Okay. That's it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? E, approve additional renovation work to be done between March 2020 and November 2020 to renovate the HVAC system, the ceilings, the lights, the roof, and other miscellaneous interior portions of the pool building in an amount not to exceed $3 million, and to be completed under existing CoStar agreements that were put in place for Phase 1A renovation work with SSM Industries and YESCO. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Hi, I'm Grace Longo, I just have a few questions about this, if you approve this, then the pool, the pool project will also be approved, because the HVAC system that is going into this building is specifically designed for a pool room, it's not an HVAC system that can be used just anywhere in the building, it's designed specifically for a pool. So if you approve step one, then you, phase one, then you will more than likely approve phase two. Just a couple of points that I'd like to make, if I may do that, when this project first started several years ago, it was supposed to be a repair, and it was supposed to be roughly $150,000. At that time, the board felt that that was a little bit excessive, so that was when the Education Foundation and the Pool Parents jumped in and said, we will raise money. I highly, would love to commend the Pool Parents on the work that they've done, they've raised $100,000, the school district has matched $60,000, the Education Foundation has promised to match $100,000, with the last payment to be made in 2021, so that's a total of $260,000 there that has been raised for the pool. I commend the Pool Parents for the awesome work that they did, and there are additional funds that they've raised, I do understand that. However, at this time, in the current atmosphere for school districts, we have a lot of things that we're facing. Every year, this district raises taxes, and I was part of that as part of the school board, to cover the minimum things that we need to pay for, pensions, upgrades in books, whatever else we need. Now we're looking at adding a $4 million debt, roughly, for a swimming pool that may be a luxury that we might need to look at, that we may be no longer able to afford. Recently, we had one of the current sitting board members vote no for hiring a Latin teacher, this is a foreign language that we offer, okay? We would, if we would have not hired that Latin teacher, we would have been down to one foreign language in this school. There is a current board member that voted no for hiring a Latin teacher, because they didn't want to spend money. We did not replace a crafts teacher, because we were trying to save money. Within the near future, Midland is going to have yet another charter school, it's going to be a STEM-themed school. We don't know how many students that could potentially take from us. Also, in the county, there's going to be a reassessment, I'm sure you all are well aware of that, you've heard it in the news. Properties in Beaver are way undervalued, if anybody is interested, you can go to the county website, in the reassess, in the assessor's office, that is all public record, you can look up any address and find out how much somebody paid for their house, and how much their, how much their house is assessed at for them to pay taxes, public record. We have a lot of houses in this district that are purchased for a lot of money and assessed at low rates, upwards of $400,000, paying taxes on $40,000, $48,000, there's a huge disparity there. So when it comes time for the reassessment, you're all gonna feel that in your pocket, because I imagine that the property values in Beaver are gonna go up. Now that being said, I understand that the, that the mileage will have to be reduced, but you're gonna feel it, you might not feel it now, because it's in your mortgage and it goes up 20 or 30 dollars a month, but when that reassessment happens, you'll all feel it. We also have, as the board has talked, several items that need fixed throughout the building, we have HVAC systems that need fixed, the roof on this entire building needs done. There are a lot of things that need done, granted, they were not done for a while, previous administrations advised the board that the money was not there to do that, so those things were put off.
Thank you, Mrs. Longo, that's three minutes.
I'm not finished yet, if you don't mind.
It's three minutes.
If you don't, if you don't mind, let me finish, I extended, when I was president of the board, I extended courtesy.
I know, not anymore, thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, I did.
Hello.
Since I, I imagine that we're gonna have multiple people doing this, if you could say your name and your address, I happen to know you.
Well, I'm gonna explain later, I'm gonna talk later on.
I understand, your name and your address, and then we'll start our.
Okay. My name is Dave Longo, I reside in Vanport Township, I am a former Vanport Township township. I am a former Vanport Township commissioner. So I know what you guys are going through as far as the decisions you have to make. I have a couple of questions real quick. I'd like to know, as a taxpayer, what is mine and taxpayers of this school district's return on investment if we move into this pool going forward? Not intangibles, tangible, physical, how are we gonna recoup this money? Can anybody answer that question for me? Does anybody have a business plan for this?
We do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear anybody from the board, you're the, the, the general public. If you have, you can speak during your three minutes, but we talk about transparency, I haven't heard anything from this board.
We do, we do have a business plan.
Okay. I would love to hear that when the time comes for that. I would like to see, as I talked about being a Vanport Township commissioner, we built a water plant years ago that services Brighton Township. Okay, Brighton Township funded some of the bill for Vanport. Municipal Water Authority, it's my understanding that Central Valley uses this pool. Plays their portion of this, so. That's a question you guys, I would like to have from you guys down the road. I also, has anybody reached out to Seneca Valley School District? They're in the process of building an eight to ten million dollar aquatic center. Has our athletic department reached out to their athletic department? Has this board reached out to them? Anybody? Pardon me?
For what, just for?
Just for basic information. If we're gonna spend four million dollars, they're spending eight to ten on an entirely new build. See how they're recouping their fund.
I think we can answer that, while, while I don't think we have, and I'm gonna pause this because I'm breaking.
Alright.
While I don't think we've reached out to Seneca Valley, can you tell me the name of the school district we did recently go see?
Upper St. Clair.
Upper St. Clair. So I don't think Seneca Valley, but Upper St. Clair.
Alright.
Okay.
Or is Upper St. Clair doing the same project?
Yeah, they, they actually have a very similar pool currently.
Okay, good. The last thing that I would like to see happen. Everybody talked about pay to play. I'd like to see that enforced here, but a step further. Pay to participate. You're in a club, you pay. You're in a sport, you pay. You're in a camp. Now it's minimum, and it's gonna recoup a little bit of your cost, but at least everybody's feeling the pain for what's trying to be done in this school district. And last but not least, if we go forward with this, I know you're in charge of the curriculum of this, this school district. I would like to see, if we're gonna spend this kind of money, we teach every kid to swim from first grade on. That's your intent, but I'm sure. Great stuff, you got the list, I wanna come back later on when visitors have something else, I have something else to say. Okay? Thank you, folks.
Anyone else?
I got something to say.
Can you say your name first?
Yeah, my name is Nicholas Mathias. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, I appreciate it a lot. I'm a junior here at Beaver Area High School. I've been swimming for about twelve years, ever since first grade. I did a club back at Blackhawk, and I can say I loved every bit of it, and even in my club years, I can say that there hasn't been a team like this before. They're so eager, always teamwork, positive morale, and I can say that I loved every bit of it. You don't see it a lot in sports anymore, you just don't. The whole positive charisma, strong morale, team building, team bonding, it's like a second family to me. And I think that's what encourages, encourages a swimmer to do their best. Over the past couple of years, through fundraisers and the help of the Education Foundation, we have made over one hundred thousand dollars. Not off of boosters or anything, the families that participated in the snack shack and, of course, the Education Foundation, but I think that's more than just the sport boosters, that's passion and faith. What I've seen over the years of varsity and even club, this isn't, it's extremely underestimated, underrated sport. Swimming is so beneficial to the human body. Stamina, endurance, muscular, skeletal, anything you think of, swimming helps with it. And this brings me to my next point. Swimming is a sport or workout, as mentioned, anyone or any age can do. Programs like swim club or community run swim fitness programs may be in the future if this were to go through. Any gender, any age, even special needs, Special Olympics, right? Can do this, and like I said before, it's great for the health, any age, and it's also great for other sports. So this brings me to the question. Why renovate? Teams like Moon, West Allegheny, and even Blackhawk have made efforts to renovate. These renovations not only make the pool look good, which, you know, may, may, but that's not the point. This shows the strength and care of the students of Beaver have for their people and for the team as a whole. Not just the team and the students, but everyone. If you go through with these renovations, I will tell you that the cost will not come useless and a waste. I'm not asking you to do this for me, but I'm asking you to do this for the people in, in the younger classes at Beaver twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and just so on for the future. And I'm telling you it's gonna be beneficial. And I guarantee the positive feedback, the papers, the reputation, the community you help with is gonna be, I can tell you, positive all around. Guaranteed. Even when I graduate, it's gonna be all in the papers, the pool's gonna look great. It won't go unnoticed, and hopefully there will be more programs we can offer in the future for their health and other. And this also promotes other students to join, making the team even bigger and better. However, it doesn't cost with the own physical attraction of the pool. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
Hi there, my name's Scott Monin, I live in Brighton Township. I am here on multiple levels. I'm a parent, my, all three of my children have swam and run track, I'm not here to advocate for one project or another. Here's my question though, and, and let me say this, I'm also the head of facilities at the Community College, and we are required by the Department of Education to have a, or a facilities master plan. I don't know if the high schools are or not, I know there's a capital plan, thank you, Mr. Heinz, for sending me a copy of one of your most recent capital plan. So here's my question to the board, I assume that you guys have a facilities committee for the board? And being a relatively new board, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to meet as a facilities committee or not, have you?
They are meeting on the nineteenth.
Okay. So, I guess more of a word of caution, you guys have bit off a lot of debt tonight, and you're about to make some decisions on some big plans. I would caution you to meet as a committee, rank your projects, get input from John and his team, and to make a prudent decision, because I wanna make sure as a taxpayer that we have enough debt service in our cash flow to be able to pay for these loans that you guys just agreed to. So, I would urge you to really rethink about whether you wanna vote for this tonight unless you have a plan in place and projects ranked, because the pool's important, the track's important, the roof's important, I'm sure there's a million other things on that list. Thank you.
Scott brings up a great point, and I wanna also encourage the board not to get caught up in the emotion of this vote or in this evening, because this has been something that we've considered for years. There's been planning, there's been experts, there's been engineers. There's been multiple people who have provided evidence, demonstrated the cost, and demonstrated the fix. So I don't think that this is an emotional vote tonight. Also, John, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Scott's also right, we are putting in order our CapEx projects. In order to move forward with some of the things that were decided last year, Tracy, you were on the board when we decided to do this, we can't move forward until we decide what this facility is going to become. So, having said that, the HVAC unit needs replaced, no matter what that facility becomes.
Right, but it's, this particular one you're voting on is specific to the pool.
Yes.
So if you're, if you choose in the future to change your mind and not do the pool, you shouldn't do the HVAC the way you're voting on it tonight.
Yes.
So at the very least, you should have the facilities committee meeting on Wednesday, table this, have the facility committee, committee meeting on Wednesday, rank your projects in the order that you need to have them ranked, and you order that they need to be done, like the roof, because that's something that's really important, and then revisit this and vote on it.
Yes, but, we've done that. So, the facility meeting that's coming subsequent to this vote is not gonna make a determination on what we decided two years ago. So, new board members, I'm not sure where they're at in, in understanding fully, they'll, they'll have to answer for that, I don't wanna answer for them, but I've been part of this for two years, and this has been studied, it's been talked about, it's been analyzed, and to my knowledge, there's been ideas about what that space could be, but no data or no demonstration on how much it's gonna cost. So, how can we table or move things down the road when we do have building envelopes? HVAC, roofs, different projects that depend on this decision. There's no, we just learned this recently, there's really no right or wrong answer here, it's a right, right situation. But we have probably the unenviable situation where we have to make a decision, we can't delay this any longer. And so I agree with Scott, this can't be a decision based on emotion in the heat of the moment. This has to be something that we've thought about, we've planned for, and we thought through to conclusion. And can I read, I've been asked to read a letter from a community member who couldn't be here tonight, so.
Sure.
To the school board and community members, I am writing in support of the aquatic facility renovation. The obvious usage would be for our swimming and diving, but the real benefit would be to our community. I have lived here in the district for thirty-two years, I no longer have children here, but the use of the pool facility, when it was functional, was nearly year round. The lessons in physical activity and just a great experience was fantastic for our family and the whole community. In addition, the updated facility would be an obvious selling point for our school district and the community would also benefit by real estate values, holding or growing. Even though there is an initial cost, this would be money wisely spent, and as a former board member, it appears to make long-term community and financial sense. Sorry, I'm out of town for this meeting, but it means a lot for us all. Respectfully and thank you. I know what you're thinking. This is Steve Neely. Not Frank.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is this three million on top of the nine point five million listed above, or is this part of that?
No, it would be part of that.
Okay.
Hey, can I also say this? It's President's Day, happy President's Day. Washington and Lincoln traditionally get celebrated, but I, I encourage you to celebrate your favorite President's birthday. But, in addition to that, John, can you help me out here? Because the narrative has changed abruptly and suddenly since, since we started talking about this a couple of years ago. I'm starting to hear phase one of the pool renovation, phase two of the pool renovation, and then there's this price tag of about four million dollars, so could you correct me and educate me one, just one last time before this thing goes down? So. Isn't it, but, but let me finish though first, John, because I thought that the HVAC and a lot of the renovations that we had planned were what we're calling currently phase one of the pool renovations, when actually, that was part of the previous allocation when we bought debt. What, what am I missing here for the, the sudden change of narrative? So, we have kept the pool out of all of the phases that you've been approving. The pool itself though, the, the actual structure, the holes of the water. Okay, so, so we have two things, guys, we have the pool, which we estimate could be under two million, and you heard that we've raised nearly two hundred and sixty thousand, and then we have part B, right, and that's the facilities, which we've already talked about for a couple of years in bar of money to fix. Right. So I think it's important for the community to understand that we're talking about two things here. But suddenly the narrative is pool renovation phase one, pool renovation phase two, four million dollars. Is that, is that reality? So the interior of the pool renovation, the numbers are actually coming in at two to two point five. I put the number at three million not to exceed in the event that we ran into a problem when we took the core buildings. Of course, if we did, we'd stop and revisit all of this. The pool itself, which is phase two, split into two phases so that you could still have the swim season. If we don't do that, if you do it all at once, you'll miss the entire swim season. So you can keep both swim seasons, but it has to be done in two phases. Two phases, correct. But, the actual work, the construction, the reconstruction, the updated facility, that has to be done, be done regardless of what that space becomes. Someone said disarray earlier, I think they meant disrepair. So we inherited this challenge. Yes. And we've already talked about how that was gonna be fixed with past bond issue. But, but yet, the narrative though currently is that we're borrowing nine million dollars, four million of which is for this new project, but that's not true. So, the original borrowing was last, was starting at the beginning of nineteen twenty for nine point four million. And the pool was not in anything at that point in time. And we figured it would cost us a little more than nine point four million to get all of the HVAC lighting, building envelope, and roofs taken care of in the middle high school and in the two other buildings, we're just going to get lighting retrofits and envelope, minor envelope repairs. But we would need to go to the markets again and get approximately possibly as much as two million to finish the three and four hundred hallway. Then when the pool got put in, we had to find a way to, to include that in all of this. So, that's where the nine point five comes in. We've got additional projects beyond that two to four, four million that we're talking about for the pool. So that'll take care of nine point five. In addition, don't forget that Dino has, we've been putting money into his budget over the years, he has four hundred thousand dollars in his budget for capital projects and deferred maintenance. And the debt service on nine point five million is three hundred and eighty-five thousand. So he'll cut his budget by three hundred and eighty-five thousand so we can get the nine point five million. Does that make sense? Kind of. Kind of.
While you're on that track, you're saying that the bond that we already had pays for this phase one, is that what you're saying? We already have the money?
Some elements, some. Yeah, so. Be careful, because the board has heard phase one A, phase one B, phase two A, two Bs. Because we're doing this constantly throughout the year to try and not interrupt classes and then full bore in the summers to try and get through all this. So the nine point four million was dedicated towards refurbishment of replacement of the HVAC in this building, as well as the building envelope, as well as the lighting, as well as the lighting in the other two elementary schools, and roof repairs at the other two, or replacements at the other two schools. John, when you say HVAC, are you including the facilities part of the pool in, in that HVAC part? No, at that time we did not, because no decision has been made whether to bring the pool forward, so we left it out. When the board said, "Let's consider the pool," then we brought it back in, and that's what you're calling phase one of the pool. Phase two of the pool is just the pool itself. Right. Did that answer your question?
Yes. So where do we, where do we stop? If we start repairing things and we find out there's a big problem, and in the middle of it we say, "Oh, we, we need another million dollars," or "We need another two million dollars," what is our final cutoff? This is something that concerns me, because, you know, as, as great as it would be to have a pool that's in good shape and a workable pool, is it, is it a pool at all cost? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, I, I, I would say it's a facility that is in disrepair, so it's a facility that needs repair. I don't, I don't know if you can say that it's at any cost or all cost, but you can't avoid doing something with that space at this point. So I've heard ideas, again, over the last few years, I've heard ideas, but I've heard nothing that would give me as a board member the ability to make a decision on something, on an idea that someone has shared. The pool is the only thing that has been researched by experts, and we've been given solid numbers. It was designed to be a pool, it was built to be a pool, and it should be renovated to be a pool.
Yes.
Can I just ask one more follow-up question? So you just, John, John, you just said that, so the debt service, the loan payment is gonna be three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the nine million dollars, right?
Yeah, three eighty-five.
Okay. So that's cool, it's covered this year. What about next year and the year after that? Do we have enough operating income or cash flow to pay for that every year, or is it gonna be re scrambling again next year?
No, it's, it's his three hundred and eighty-five thousand, it's in the budget every year from now to forever, so we, we're taking it away from him and putting it in the debt service.
Okay. I think that's an important factor, everybody don't understand that there actually is money to cover it.
Right, but then you're not saving any money for capital improvements with that, because you have a four hundred thousand dollar capital, you have a four hundred thousand dollar budget that Dino's using, and you're taking three hundred and eighty-five thousand away from it every year, only leaving.
from it every year, only leaving the rest, the remainder, for Dino's budget.
Whether you fix a pool or not, you have to do something with that space, which is going to ultimately cost a lot of money as well. It's going to cost a lot of money to fill in that pool if you want to put something else in.
But I think we're all along.
Okay, so, can this woman right here, can you, can you stand and can we have your name and do your three minutes?
My name's, I'm Leah Harden. I have two kids that go to the district, that go to the district. They are both involved in a competitive swim team at New Brighton right now. I, along with six other families, swim there. We would love to obviously see the pool upgraded so that our kids can swim in our home district rather than us going there four nights a week and paying some other district. We know that the pool is never going to generate as much revenue as a football field or a basketball court, but like the young man over here said, and somebody in the letter from the community member set up, there's a lot of ways that, once the pool is upgraded and up to date, that we could make money for the district through swim lessons, birthday parties, there's a lot of things that, that we could do there. And just the swim club alone, starting in the younger grades, I mean, they start there at age six and go all the way through high school. So, I think that yes, it might cost a lot of money, but so is something else. And who's to say that the pool can't raise just as much money as something else can? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pete Grunberg. I'm the Booster President of the Swim and Dive Team. And, you know, through all these comments, it's basically left me speechless. So we all have something in common, and that is, none of us know what I'm going to say right now. So, I told my wife I'd start with something funny because I'm a bit of a wit, but she said, "Yeah, you're half right there." So, I just want to say, all the comments are correct. This can't be just a high school pool. Absolutely cannot. It has to be a community pool, because it doesn't make sense to let it go stagnant seven months, eight, nine months out of the year, when the competitive swimming season is only three and a half. So when the Boosters started this project, it was always with the intent to create a holistic, community-wide, district-wide, county-wide swimming program, aquatic program, long-term. We have a business plan in place that conservatively shows that we could generate upwards of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars a year for just revenue, you know, and that includes the birthday parties, that includes the club swimming, the swim clinics, the diving, the BSA merit badge clinics, you know, for swimming and lifesaving, canoeing, kayaking. You know, there's a whole gamut of that. I'd be happy to share that business plan with, you know, any of you. It'd be my pleasure. That was something that was challenged to us probably two and a half years ago, when we as a Booster organization, probably three years ago, Kathy Johnson as president at the time, we sat, you know, across from the board, and they challenged us. They were, they were tough on us. And we said, "You don't, we want this." And, you know, it was a testament to everybody here and maybe more that came when it was announced that the pool might close. You know, you all came and rallied and showed, you know, your strength and said, "Hey, this is, this is for the community. We want this." I'm in marketing and I deal a lot with perceived and actual value. And the difference, the issue with perceived value is, it can't be less than the actual value. In other words, what your product or service says it does, it has to actually do. And so I just wanted to, you know, add some actual value points that, you know, swimming provides, you know, athletics programming. Now, I'm not, and I'm not talking about this from the Swim and Dive High School team. This is actually, you know, swimming in general. In fact, swimming is something everybody should learn. Statistics show that learning to swim not only increases confidence and builds child self-esteem, but according to the C and C, it also helps eliminate drowning. The highest cause of premature death in children ages one to four and youth on the autism spectrum. In fact, swimming is a lifelong activity that provides some of the best all-around conditioning and many sports.
Hey, I'm sorry, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Oh, it wasn't three minutes? I'm sorry, it's, I don't know.
Thank you.
I really wouldn't have that. It was all bad.
So, then Sean, you reside in Brighton Township. I really don't have any skin in the game. My daughter did take, my oldest daughter did take a couple diving lessons with the club and everything. But I think the way everybody's looking at that pool is different than I expected. So, number one, I am a high school teacher. Unfortunately, I teach a high school who is prestigious, but though it does not have a pool. You need to look at this structure as more than just a pool. It is a classroom. It needs to be used as such. Yes, it definitely is, it's no more or less important than the gym, the football stadium, the track. Sporting events go on. But also, it should be utilized as an educational tool, to all the kids in this building. It should be offered as classes, as well as outside resources. So, for instance, your physics classes, your science classes, your tech ed classes, you should be able to utilize that space for underwater robotics constructions. Utilize it for physics labs in order to test buoyancy, so on and so forth. Use it as a resource within the school to where it's not visualized as just a pool that's utilized by one pup, one squirrel, whatever it might be. You know, I, again, I graduated from here. I did not swim. My wife graduated from here, did not swim. But, we were exposed to that as high school, junior high and high school students, and it was a lifelong lesson by far. Friends of mine who teach in other districts utilize their pools in their physics labs in order to do buoyancy tests. So they have their, their physics students construct cardboard boats. And then they go in and they test their boats based on buoyancy and weight distribution. They can calculate a bunch of physical, uh, physical things with it. Underwater robotics is another great up-and-coming field. And I can tell you, I am the technology education teacher at Morris High School. We went through a renovation ten years ago. Our technology education department was gifted by our district within the renovation budget, one-point-six million dollars. I can tell you, if a technology lab is what you perceive, you're never going to sniff it for anything less than that. We already had the structure there. Literally, we were three printers, CNC machines, so on and so forth. Like, I mean, you're not going to get it back to the bottom. So, I really and truly see, I truly see the validity in maintaining the structure as is. And I think I heard it referred to as a luxury and trying to, what you gain, what are we going to gain back as taxpayers? Well, the bottom line is, your high school is the benchmark anchor of your community. So, as I, as my wife and I decided to move back here, this is the reason we did. We looked at houses in Blackhawk, we looked at houses in Central Valley. And really, truly, this district is what pulled us back in to this, into where we live now. So, you, you need to take the appropriate steps in order to...
Sean, thank you. That's three minutes.
Save and maintain.
Hi, I'm Emilia Vieri. I'm actually with the track parents. And I appreciate everything and I understand repairs for the track. But I am here because it was raised last week by Mr. Baradelli about looking at where this nine-point-five million dollars is going, if there's any other projects that need to be addressed. The question came up about the track, to which Heather Whiskey and I, I don't know if she's here, said, "Yes." So, since it's un, so it seems like nobody knows what needs to be done. I actually made a handout for you. This is how organized I am sometimes. So if you can take one and pass it along, I appreciate it. So I have two students here in Beaver. One who's a senior, she's a part of the track team and cross-country team, and has been so all through her college, or her college, I'm going ahead, all through her high school career. I have a freshman who is not a part of the track team. But, I'm not here because these fixes that need to be done to the track aren't going to happen this year. It's no benefit to her, no skin off my back. I'm here as an advocate for those track students, many who are on the swim team and some who are not on the swim team who are here. I'm an advocate for them and an advocate for our teams. They deserve to have a track that enhances and allows them the opportunity to perform at the highest level. I can, like I said, I completely agree and know that the pool needs repairs. And I completely commend the efforts that the swim boosters have done to raise money for their needs. However, something, something you all might not know about the pool is that, or I'm sorry, about the track. It is used by not only the high school and middle school track teams, it is also used by the community. It's a public walk track. So in the spring, summer, fall, there are people out there at the track. It is also used by classes. It's used by physical education. It's used by ROTC. It's used by JV and varsity football. It's used by youth sports. It's used by youth soccer. It's used by cheerleading. The list goes on. This is hundreds and hundreds of students. You may not also know that the track team consists of seventy to ninety athletes per season. That's the varsity team. The middle school is anywhere from fifty-five to sixty-five, you know, given the season. And, on a braggadocious note, like the swim team, the track team has also had one WPIL championship each year in the last six, out of the last six, six out of the last seven years since two thousand thirteen. That is a huge accomplishment for this program. And also, speaking about the conditions of the track, we are scheduled, the varsity team is scheduled to have two home track meets this year. The middle school is due, is scheduled to have three track meets this year. Well, guess what? Because of the current condition of the track, we might not have those home meets. It's going to be later determined as the season gets closer. Now, I understand that the school district is looking into the repairs and the cost for the, for the track, and we very much appreciate that. But let me say first and foremost why this is important. Safety. You not only have students on that track, you have the public out there as well, walking along that track. You cannot afford to have people getting injured on the school property. Secondly, if...
I'm sorry, it's three minutes.
All right. There's a lot more I can say, so may I have to say it later?
Thank you for your comment.
I'm sorry.
John, could you tell us, one second, John, could you tell us, is the track on the list of things, what, what are the other things that are on that list if you have it?
Well, just to comment, not just the track, the issue at the track, the heaving that you're showing in your pictures is probably being caused by, we need to relook at the drainage around the outside and the inside of that field and take care of that. So you're looking at ripping the whole track out and doing the drainage about two million. If it were just the track, it'd be about one and a half to one-point-seven. Roofs, a lot of roofs.
Dr. Rob, Dr. Rob, could you get me a copy of that presentation? Just because I obviously can't be there to get one this evening.
I can, yes.
Thank you.
John, did you make the lab last, lab last week?
Yeah.
Is that on the list at all anywhere in terms of renovating stuff, labs and all?
Yeah, but we don't have costs yet.
The young man in the green t-shirt.
My name is Chase Ward. I am a Beaver alumni. I was on the swim team, but I'd like to say as a community member that that pool is not only for the community, but it's for our community of disabled students and disabled community members. Swimming is really the only sport where disabled people can actually participate in a sport and be competitive and feel accepted. And I feel like that pool is a statement for not only the community's sake, but for that specific community's sake, thriving.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name's Mark Williams. I'm the head swimming and diving coach here at Beaver Area High School. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. This evening, I'd like to take a few moments to share some insight on proposed pool renovations for Beaver Area High School. First, I'd like to share with you some of the accomplishments for our team over the past two years. For a second year in a row, we have the largest team in the section and one of the largest overall teams in the region. We have numerous Whipple qualifiers each year, strong academic standings, and the boys placed in the top three teams in the section over the past two years. Even more impressive is the fact that last year, we had our first All-American athlete with Andrew Sescro setting the Whipple record for one meter, one meter diving and following it up with a second-place finish at this PIAA state competition. This is a group of student athletes that are extremely passionate about their sport and believe in the benefits of swimming. I cannot express how proud I am of this group for all of their accomplishments, from finishing their first rates to diving off the blocks or off the board for the first time, or to the extremes of qualifying for the Whipple or PIAA championship. Now, let me change paces for a moment here. My grandfather was a World War II veteran and loved to spend time on the water. He loved to tell stories about building boats as a child and later in life while in the military and in retirement. We recently spent his hundredth birthday spending the day with him on his boat at High Mountain State Park. He always said that learning to swim is the only sport that can truly save your life. I learned to swim at three years old. I've swam competitively for eighteen years and have been coaching for the past nine years. I've taught hundreds of kids to swim, ranging in age from two to sixty-five. I guarantee that lessons that have taken place at Beaver Area High School over the past fifty years have saved lives. And furthermore, I also guarantee that lessons that take place in the newly renovated pool will save countless additional lives in the future. This decision is about more than just a high school team. This pool must be looked at as an asset to our community. Providing a place for our community's children to learn to swim is the best gift that we can give future generations of Beaver residents. We have the opportunity to provide a place for swim lessons for children and adults, club swim teams, birthday parties, community swims, movie nights, swim clinics, injury rehab, sports conditioning, aquatic fitness, the list goes on and on. These programs coincide with the, must coincide with those renovations that we're talking about this evening. Now, lastly, I leave you with this. As a board and as a community, I urge you to seriously consider the opportunity that has been presented to you at this moment. We are able to provide a home for countless aquatic programs that can be enjoyed for life. Please look at the pros and the information that have been presented.
Thank you. That's three minutes.
Sure. Thank you.
My name is Jim Masterson. I'm a member of the Beaver County Special Olympicsnascent team. And I just want to say that we would love to have access to a facility that you're talking about. Right now, we use Sunrise Pool. We get maybe three or four lanes there. There's four or five kids camp in each lane. We're constantly struggling for facilities. Recently, we had to jump into the Beaver River, if you saw that on the news. So, as representative of the Special Olympics, I'd just like to say, it'd be great to have it as a community asset.
Hi, I'm Heather Whiskey. I just have one quick question, and that is about the pool being used for the community, which is like a great idea. Have you guys discussed how that's going to be staffed and what that looks like? I mean, because we referred to mind that we are able to pay a language teacher. We're understaffed for maintenance, so we need to hire maintenance.
Our teacher.
We can't have an art teacher. So how are we staffing the pool after hours? Are we going to need lifeguards? Someone to run it, someone to maintain it?
Your students.
What does that mean?
Like, part of your students are lifeguards now, too.
Yes, well, are we going to do it for free?
I would. I would, I would give anything for this community. I love the history of this, this place, and I love the community as well. And I'll do anything to save some lives. So we actually did consider that as part of the business plan. We have preliminarily identified somebody on staff who might be interested in taking on that position. And instead of having it be, and this, again, it's all in the preliminary stages based on what happens tonight, then we can begin to solidify these plans. So, don't think that this is exactly what's going to happen. But, that person could decide that they would take this on, based on the amount of money that comes in, that they would get a percentage. So if no money comes in, the district isn't paying anything out. So there would never be a loss to the district as far as that pool manager would be concerned. We do currently run lifeguarding classes. One of our PE teachers is certified and runs that class. And part of that is so that we would have enough students if we were to reinstitute swimming during the school day and for these after-school activities. So, in that one small question that you're asking, I think we do have a pretty good grasp on what we would do and how it wouldn't cost the district additional money. But there's a whole lot of other things that I'm not so sure we have that kind of concrete answer. Mr. Grunberg, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, to your point, the devil's in the details, right? We've got a business plan that we put together, you know, over... We've got a business plan that we put together, you know, over two years, or I just, I just renovated, you know, renovated it myself, the business plan, and it shows that it can be self-sustaining. We ran a kind of a small version of club swimming, swim clinics, and diving this fall. It was well-attended. I think we had right out of Gate sixty-five kids. I think the gentleman back there had one of his children diving. We have, I mean, it's a pretty robust program that'll serve to help sustain that building.
Thank you for that piece. And that may be one of the areas where Mr. Grunberg and I have met every six weeks for several years now. It's going to be difficult either way, right? Because we're not going to see each other as much. And that might be a point that we, that we disagree on, that it would be self-sustaining. I do believe that the business plan would bring in some additional money, but no, no amount of swim classes or adult swim or lap swim or any of that is really ever going to help us break even with our costs. And that's not necessarily the point. Some people would hear that and say, well, good, you can bring in some money, but we would never expect the sport to pay for the facility. So there's lots of different ways of looking at this, and as I believe it was Mr. Bovellino said, it's a right-right situation. It's not a right-wrong. Both ways are, are right. Both ways of thinking about this are okay. It's, that's what makes it difficult, is that one of these isn't necessarily wrong, it's just different. We do have another comment over here.
The gentleman next to Heather.
Greg Caluso. Do you really consider renting it out for birthday parties? Is that okay?
That really is part of the business plan, yes.
The only, the only thing I have to say about that is I have unfortunately been to birthday parties at the Sunrise. And I have seen a horrible situation there. They've had a few situations like that. The child was under, under the water, almost drowned. The ambulance had to come. That was one of the worst things to ever see, is a child. Is that a concern? Do we need additional insurances to do these type of things? I don't want volunteer lifeguards for those type of situations. As great as they want it to be, we're, we're taking on a big responsibility if something horrible was to happen.
I agree that appropriate staffing will be necessary, and as far as your question about additional insurance, every time we take on a new activity at the district, we are talking with our insurance company and saying, what, what additional information do we need? Do we need different-
So you priced it, and it's going to cost more to do that insurance-wise? If you're running the facility, we transfer liability to you and make you pay for the lifeguards that will be there, that we pay. You provide the lifeguards. Yes, and then we transfer all the liability through a contract. And a solicitor, that, that's fine?
Depends on the contract, but we haven't done one.
We haven't done one, but-
Yeah, we did with Central Valley.
Okay, so those things that happened-
What do they do with the outside pool?
That, that was to fix that, or were they under the same situation?
I can't speak to the other pools, but we went, we went through a long meeting with Vice President of First Renegation from Right Specialty, and these were documents that he gave to us as samples to use that he felt transferred liability very well. So we use that language.
There was a, okay, right here.
Wait, I want to, can I comment on Greg's point, though? You do bring up a good point, but let's keep this in context of everything that's on this campus. You can get severely hurt on the football field. You can get severely hurt on the basketball court. You can get severely hurt on the track. And while swimming is, is dangerous, there was a lot of other things.
When we bring the public, I understand not-
Yeah. Okay, that's fair then, if that's what you're starting by the public.
No, I get it, if someone gets hurt. I was talking about for birthday, is it worth it for birthday parties? Do we really need the money for birthday parties?
That's, that's a good point.
I get it for all the other activities.
Sandy Eglay, I live on Second Street in Beaver. Because I don't know, how many students, junior, well, high school students do we have on the swim team and on the dive team?
Forty-plus?
Thirty-two this year.
Thirty-two. Thank you.
Yes.
Becky, I'm the only one with two students here at the district, and when they moved here almost six years ago, I reached out to somebody I didn't even know, saying, I just love everything I see on this Beaver Area School District website. I love the school district. I saw what was offered here, and we built a house in Pine Regentland, but I thought, no, I'm going to Beaver, because I read everything they had. I went there, we walked around town, spent money in town, we walked the streets like we lived there. And everyone I talked to said, you're going to love it here. It's a special place to be. The people are special. Everything's special. Well, guess what? It hasn't let up my hopes. I love it here. I love the school. Every time, I have total faith in Mr. Beckel's doing something, technology, like you name it, they're doing it kindness, giving codes, like the whole, this is a whole big thing here, not just the pool. When you go back to the handwork at Mars, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, you're really looking, I bet I'm not the only person out there with a twinkle in their eye when they look at Beaver Area School District, and I want to keep it that way.
Thank you.
I just have a question for, what was your name again, sir?
Greg.
Greg, I have a question for you, sir. Could you just describe to me what happened at Sunrise Pool for me?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Just one of those things.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Denise, can I make a comment? Because I think it's important to know that when, if and when we approve or we can move forward with this, there are things that we're going to gain from this as well. There's a lot of efficiencies that we're going to gain with newer technology, new HVAC. We're going to have pumps that are operating more efficiently. We're going to have containment within the walls that are going to be able to hold temperature and moisture, get rid of that when needed, or whatever, humidity. I mean, there's a lot of things that we're going to gain as well that are going to help with the cost. It's not going to be overly substantial, but these are improvements that are going to help us in the long run as well. So just something else to keep in mind, we've got stuff in there that's working. I don't even know when the last time the pumps were replaced, or the other things that are helping that pool operate, but it's due. It's long past due.
Thank you, Mr. Barandelli.
I have one more. Can I ask one more question? If we go with the gunite pool, what's the life span of the pool?
I'm sorry, warranty on gunite is like ten-year, depending on what they coat it with.
It's ten to fifteen years, but the basis of design is a stainless steel pool with a twenty-five-year warranty.
So your options are gunite or shotcrete for about ten or fifteen. At the other end of the spectrum is a total stainless steel pool with a twenty-five-year warranty. In between the two is a hybrid concrete and stainless at, I believe, what was it, twenty-year warranty on that?
Right, and then there's the tile which can go fifty-plus.
So every roughly twenty years, you have to redo the pool?
Warranty is a month.
We didn't do that with our pool. It's been in place fifty years.
So I did have, I did ask that question of the, is the Murtha rep here? Yeah, that's one of the questions I asked you, and you guys have been installing those worth of pools for how long?
Since the sixties.
And I was asking you if any of the lamination had ever failed, and your answer-
No.
Okay. And that's the interior coating they put on the stainless steel.
Tile can be seventy days.
A what?
Tile line-
Tile line, concrete pool.
Words of seventy days.
But very similar, yeah.
Okay, if there's no more, go ahead, Mike Kelly.
Mike Kelly, Beaver Borough. With that four million dollars plus, if you take that over, you know, prorated, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year per kid. If you prorate that over twenty-five years, that's still like five thousand dollars a kid. You know, if it would grow, that cost would obviously come down. Couple of questions. Why aren't we using this as a community pool now? That's one question. Why don't we use it for PE classes? If, you know, I mean, I agree, you know, swimming is important, learn how to swim. We haven't used it for PE classes for a very long time.
It's a, it's a, it's a cool education. I can answer that when you're done.
Okay. Why aren't we contemplating going the HVAC first? I don't know if I heard correctly, but depending on the core borings, you don't know what is actually required for the pool? Or is that a known? Like if one A is one B already a fixed known cost? It seems like you should start with the unknown cost, so you know what the total cost is going to be. If you already sink three point two in, it's eight, it's pool HVAC specific, then you kind of get, you're locked into going down that road. So those are my three questions.
Okay, so let's start with the, with the students' participation piece. Currently, we only have a couple of high school courses using the pool for PE. We used to, as I think you were pointing out, have our entire middle school go through that process, and I think we would go back to it. The pool became erratic. Sometimes we couldn't keep the heat high enough, so the kids weren't going to get hypothermia trying to participate in PE class. Okay, maybe it wasn't that bad, but it was pretty bad. We had issues with, with some of the equipment. It seems to be stabilized right now, and our number one concern was to get to the swim team through their seasons. Having the additional parties coming in and using it, we had some level of concern that, that that would cause additional problems. So until we had the pool stabilized, we were concerned with bringing in other people. Now, you had a second part of that that I think maybe John can, can share where the misconception is.
Yeah, remind me, what was that?
Why are we going the HVAC first? Because I heard about core borings and-
So the core borings are actually going to be done first. So that's, that's a safety issue to make sure that everything around the structure is in place, there are no voids around it, and we'll make the determination after that what has to be done. If we find everything's good, then we're good to go. Why the HVAC first? Because we have to put scaffolding up to tear the popcorn coating that's on the ceiling now, and it costs about twenty to thirty thousand dollars to get the scaffolding up. So there's, it'd be crazy to take it down and put it up again to install ductwork and to install the lighting, so we're just going to do it all at that time.
But are you going to know the total cost of the pool project prior to awarding that HVAC contract? Are you going to, like you said, the core borings are going to take place before the HVAC work happens, but you're voting on a three point two million dollar HVAC portion, do you know the total project cost yet?
No, right now-
Do you know that before you award the HVAC contract?
Yes, we will. This is a not-to-exceed right now, just so the board could say, yeah, it makes sense to move forward. The next thing that happens after this would be contracts would be awarded.
So if you would do core borings and it would determine that it adds, you know, millions of dollars, you would have the ability to then not go through with the HVAC?
Move out of the facilities committee meeting immediately, and then probably an executive settlement, talk about what they wanted to do.
John, is it possible to, if the board tonight chose to not move forward this right now, to direct you to go and do the core board testing, get that done? We have a meeting coming up, obviously, in a couple of days for the facilities committee, do kind of what Tracy's alluded to, prioritizing where we as a board think our priorities should be, and then maybe push this back and let them kind of fund raising and do their thing, and maybe bring this up a year from now. And if we did that, and I'm not saying we are, I'm just saying if that hypothetical was, how would we proceed with the pool? It's obviously operational and not to its fullest extent, but it still is able to be used, correct?
Yes. Yes, if we did that, though, we would delay phase one till next year. We couldn't make the construction schedule.
The core borings are just for the deck area.
Yeah, right.
You know it's under the pool. And so the core borings, there's already allowance for cost for that, and allowance for bad news for that, and it'll be in terms of tens of thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars. So just for backfill.
Excuse me. Did you say you know what's under the pool? Is that, I wanted to make sure that they heard that.
Yes.
It's only the decking area that raises some concerns.
Thank you.
And Jared, I want to push back a little bit on us delaying this anymore, only because I think it's been delayed and delayed and delayed, and now we're stuck with making a very substantial decision to spend a lot of money because it has been delayed for such an extended period of time. And that's not an indictment on any previous board member or any administration or anything like that. It's just the way it is. We're here, we have an opportunity to take this, this next step for the pool. I believe we heard a lot of people talk about the asset that it is and the impact it has and the contributions it makes. So I'm only pushing back because I don't, I don't want apprehension to get into the heads of the board if we're going to vote. I'm hopeful that everyone's going to vote to move forward with this, because in another year, we're going to be faced with more projects like the track. We're going to be faced with more projects that are just going to give us an opportunity to make another delayed decision. So that's why I'm pushing back, not for any other reasons. I just, I don't want us to see this get delayed any further, and then a year or longer down the road, we're faced with maybe higher costs, or the project scope work is different, and it gets kicked, kicked down the road or even gets denied. So I'll stop there. So can I, real quick, Luke, my only rebuttal to that is I do, when it comes down to something like this, we all have differences of opinions on where money should be prioritized. I do know John, we asked John last month, I believe, to give us a list of dollar amount and also kind of an idea of where we need to spend money, and there was roughly, I think, we averaged around thirteen million dollars' worth of projects around the building that could be done, based on priority. I feel that since we're relatively new board, I think we should take a step back, and I know this has been going on for years, so I know that that's a hard thing to ask, but take a step back, let us have the facilities meeting, come together as a board, prioritize, figure out what we want to spend the money on, and then come back and revisit this. That's, that's what I would personally ask, just so we can have consensus as a new board. You make a fair point. I don't disagree with the goal of what you want to accomplish in this facilities meeting. I think, though, that from a priority standpoint, we're already at priority number one, at least from where our cap projects are.
We don't know that because we haven't had a committee. Just for the sake of the due board, I mean, I understand what Jared's saying.
I get it, too, and it's not a bad point. I'm seeing strategy-wise, we should take a look at everything, come together, and then revisit, but that's just my personal opinion. And I'm not against it. I support whatever we as a board come up with. I just think we should take a further look at this.
All right, we need to call a roll call vote to, can you pull this?
There's a motion on the floor. We had a second. It's time for a roll call vote. So, Mr. Secretary, call the votes.
Mr. Barandelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bickerton?
No.
Mr. Bovellino?
Yes.
Mrs. DeKetch?
No.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mrs. Yates?
Six to three?
Yes.
Six to three motion, that's it.
Okay, six to three, margin of error. Okay, item F, approve the purchase-
Can we applaud for that?
Item F, approve the purchase of two thousand two hundred new iPads, subject to PE PPM pricing at eight hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, to be financed with a five hundred thousand dollar down payment to be made in the nineteen, twenty fiscal year, first forming to a partial delivery, and then three lease payments of And then three lease payments of one hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-three cents per year for three years, beginning in July twenty twenty at a taxable APR of two point four oh three percent to avoid impacting our bank qualified interest rate in the event that we move forward with the bond funding and the new bond issue, subject to financial legal review of the lease documents. Do I have a motion?
Seven minutes. Second.
Any discussion?
Just one comment here. I noticed a typo here as you were reading that. That should be a lease payment of one hundred and sixteen thousand two, or one forty-five.
One hundred and sixteen thousand?
Two hundred and one dollars and forty-five cents.
And forty-five cents, okay. Okay.
So it's going to be a motion?
Yes. We need a roll call vote for this offer.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Baradelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bickerton? Oh, Mr. Bickerton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bobalino?
I'm sorry, John, what are we, what are we doing? I was, I was calling for motion at the last vote in, uh. The iPad was a change of price to one sixteen.
iPads.
Okay, we changed the price, that's what we're voting on now.
It's still below the current rate, up in the budget.
Okay, yes.
Mrs. DeKetch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mr. Peterson?
He's, he's gone.
No, he's still here. Mr. Peterson?
No.
Wait, here he comes. I hear him. Mr. Peterson?
Hello? Yes, sorry.
Can you vote on the iPads?
My Bluetooth, my Bluetooth was switching over, yes, sorry about that.
That was a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yates?
Yes.
unanimous.
Okay, G, approve the E plus technology ink purchase for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year, totaling seventy thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents, pending USAC funding approval for discounts totaling thirty thousand or greater. We have a motion to approve. Seven minutes. Second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Baradelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bickerton?
Yes.
Mr. Bobalino?
Yes.
Mrs. DeKetch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yates?
Yes.
Unanimous.
If, if there are students here who need to go and do homework, the board understands. If their parents need to take them home, we understand that too. You're welcome to stay, but. Ten seconds.
You know, I hadn't thought about time, Rachel, and then Mars. Boy, I wouldn't want to pay those taxes.
Actually, I have two board members stuck there. Hey, me too.
Uh, we're, we're taking a, a couple minute break. A couple board members had to use the restroom.
Any refund on, on DD?
What, what number?
I think you should bundle, what are we, DD?
She, uh, she has received some, she has received some instruction from our solicitor on what to bundle.
I was thinking to you, just about bundling the entire.
Oh, I got it, I got it. Okay. We're ready to reconvene. Are you headed up?
Before we reconvene, can I just take a second to talk about the kids that left? Um, I just want to, you know, commend our swim team and, um, and the kids for their commitment to save swimming. Fourteen of the children, fourteen of the kids on the swim team are currently Red Cross certified lifeguards. And so when the young man said that he would volunteer, he meant he would volunteer his professional services. And there are five more in the running to become lifeguards. Um, just their commitment, their passion, their willingness to work in the summertime for no pay, to raise a hundred thousand dollars in four years is just so admirable. And it's not just the current class, but the young people in the classes before. So I have never worked with a more wonderful group of students and parents. And I just wanted to put that out.
It is a classy group. Okay.
Okay, item H, approve the RFP for, for legal services. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Denise, can I address this issue? Um, I know this isn't as exciting issue as the pool, but it may be almost as an important issue as the pool. Because a solicitor can either get you into a lot of trouble and cost you a lot of money or keep you out of trouble and save you a lot of money. Now, maybe I'm preaching to the, preaching to the choir here, and you're all in favor of the RFP. And if you are, I'm sorry to take up your time. But if you have some doubts on this, I'd like to explain what a good RFP accomplishes for you and why you should vote in favor of this. I'm going to follow my script, so I get done in three minutes. First, um, an RFP is a request for proposal. It's a ru, it's a routine method used by government agencies to advertise position openings for professional services. This is routine way to do it. A well drafted RFP, a request for proposals, can be especially helpful in the present situation when almost half the board has no experience at all with the issues on, that school, I shouldn't say at all, but has less than a lot of experience with the issues that come before a school on a regular basis. Therefore, they don't have a full understanding of the areas that a school solicitor needs to be proficient in. But a well drafted RFP, this is typical, sets forth the qualifications that you expect out of the persons you want to apply. It sets forth your expectation concerning the skills needed and the services to be provided. It describes what needs to be submitted with the proposal, including demonstrating how the proposer meets the qualifications and can provide the services requested. And finally, it explains how you're going to evaluate the proposals that are submitted. What's, what does a good drafted RFP accomplish? First of all, it's the most efficient way of getting quality proposers, and it makes it less likely to have a lengthy process of weeding out clearly unqualified proposers. Second of all, and follow through with this, provides the most transparent way, a catch term that some people like to use about how a board is supposed to act. It becomes a transparent way of selecting a new solicitor because the process is clearly and openly described, okay? Um, I notice on the agenda, there are no other alternatives to a RFP. So if you vote against an RFP, I would submit to you, you're voting against transparency. I presume that nobody has made up their mind already as to who they want to select without conducting a process to determine what it takes to get the best candidates. If you do that and do not have a process in place, it establishes a horrible principle by not making a real effort to get the best possible candidate. And obviously, it violates the principle of transparency, which I have heard when I was over there and there were people over here that were out in this audience, were all in favor of transparency. And to me, a vote against an RFP for a solicitor is a vote against transparency. As I say, I apologize if I'm preaching to your, to the choir and you're all in favor of it. I sure hope you are.
Thank you.
Was that a first?
That was first.
Oh, I, I happen to agree with everything that you just said, so, for the record. Thank you for coming.
If, if we are, if, if you feel that we're happy with our legal counsel and we don't want to start interviewing new legal counsel, is there any need to have an RFP? Like, is this, this is only if we are interviewing other legal counsel?
And I apologize, the assumption was, with that being on the agenda, that you made that initial determination that you're interested in looking at a solicitor. If that's not the initial, uh, if my initial assumption is wrong, then, you know, you vote against an RFP. But if you're looking for a solicitor, including your present solicitors who can apply and submit an RFP, you go the RFP route. That's all I'm, I'm not trying to talk you into or out of a solicitor. I'm just saying, I saw that agenda item, I thought it was important enough to come and address you.
So in other words, if we put up an RFP and the current solicitor and firm have all those qualifications, then that's obvious, correct? If all the, if all the boxes check?
You can stick with them. I, I don't know why this was on the agenda, but since it's on the agenda, I thought it was worth addressing. I am not in for or against any specific solicitors. I'm not recommending any or, or, I'm not in that issue. I'm just saying, if that's what you want to do, please do the RFP to make it transparent.
Go ahead, Luke.
Yeah, so approving this motion authorizes Dr. Ro, Dr. Rowe, you to release this to the, to the public for responses, correct?
That's correct.
That's what we're, that's what we're voting on.
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're understanding that.
Personally, I, I'm happy with our legal services, but if it's between having an RFP and not having an RFP, then that's a different matter. Because if, if we aren't moving forward, then definitely an RFP is proses that.
Can everyone pay due our attention?
Absolutely.
In the RFP, it says that the RFPs are due no later than March first, but to contact John with questions by March second, unless I'm reading it wrong. But it looked like it was to contact John with questions, but it was due the day before.
That means we don't want questions.
There goes our transparency.
I, I will address, I will absolutely address the timelines.
Okay.
To, that, so that they make more sense. You bet. Thank you for pointing that out.
Question.
What?
Six point one, we mentioned the district as higher, or, turn the district. What do you mean by the district, Karen? You write this?
The school district.
So including us as well? I ask because, you know, boards I've served on, it's always the board that hires and fires the solicitor. This is in the district itself reserves the right to do all these things. So how is that going to involve us in this process?
Uh, the, the board is, is the, is the body that votes for the district, not the administration. So whenever the district is bound by something, it is the, or intends to be bound by something, it is the board of directors that puts them in that position.
In terms of the selection process I'm asking, though, in terms of that process, selection of?
Yes, indeed, the same thing. Uh, we will put out, if we decide to go forward with an RFP, if the board decides to do that, then we will put them out and after the question period and after they come back, we will score them and share that with the, um, I'm not sure what's going on there. We will score them and share that with the board.
Uh, Dr. Rowe, question?
Scott, can you, can you mute yourself on your side, please?
Say again?
Can you please mute your side unless you need to talk?
It's like BB-8, man.
I did.
Okay, we were getting some kind of weird feedback. I thought that was on your side, my apologies.
No, but some, there's a, there's a guy in the car next to me. I'm in the parking lot of the hospital, so let me, let me move.
Safely.
I'll move, sorry.
So if this goes through, we put this out there, we ask for a deadline of March first or second. Obviously, there's some confusion there.
Right.
If we get twenty respondents, it says here, we're going to interview them apparently at our work session, I'm guessing, on March ninth. Are we going to open that up to interviewing all of them? Or beforehand, are we going to be scoring like a top three that we want to bring in?
That's correct.
And will we be doing that via, is that not going to be a public thing? Is that going to be via email? And then we're going to prepare ourselves to, to have those? I mean, are we dialing down to the top five, top three? Is there, should we be figuring that out now as to what our goal is?
That's what I was trying to ask.
Because it could be, because if we're going to interview them at the work session, I think we should as a board, um, maybe have more of a, because if, if we get twenty firms that put a request in, how are we going to dial that down to whatever number we wanted?
Well, it might whittle itself down if we, if Dr. Rowe reviews, and some might be automatically eliminated because they don't meet whatever the, some of these standards are in the RFP.
They don't have to meet all the standards, they, it's just recommended that.
Absolutely, but based on review of that, we'll become aware of, hey, these four don't have as much experience as we're requesting in the RFP. Thus, they would be the first to be considered to be removed.
Who's ultimate decision is to say these four? Because that could be, there could be varying opinions on who we think meets what criteria.
Well, if you want, we can put together, Aaron, if, if we can put together an employee relations committee to take the vetting process.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the employee relations.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the employee relations committee could be appropriate, but there may be another more appropriate way to analyze and make a decision from the RFPs that we get. And to add to the discussion, yes, Bruce, I think the intention is to look at that. And that's what, and you're 100% right that we should do that. And it may or may not have happened last time. I don't know. I wasn't on the board when the previous firm was hired, but we definitely need to do it this time if it wasn't last time. And Luke, we could do it there, but that would be something I'd recommend that would happen in an executive session. Because you're talking about an employment decision with the whole board. So, it wouldn't limit it to a committee.
Well, then we should just plan on scheduling an executive session soon after respondents turned in their?
Yeah, that would be a good strategy, yeah.
We're still having the goal of interviewing March 9th and then voting on it March 16th.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's the intent. I think we should stick to the timeline. I'm in favor of that, at least.
Well, everything is good here besides the fact of if we get 20 people, how are we figuring out what of those 20 we want to bring to that next interviewing process? And that's where I think there's not a lot of, I think we need to have a consensus on.
I think just by the fact of the RFP, that some individuals won't meet all the criteria.
They don't have to meet all the criteria, though.
Why not?
Because I thought we, Carrie, when Dr. Rowe, when we asked you about this, it's, you're saying in here that it's recommended that they meet these bullet points, but it's not?
But it's not required.
It's not required that they have to meet. We're not saying somebody has to check off every one of these boxes to be able to submit their proposal.
Well, if you're born to a doctor and they, and you have five things and two doctors have five and then another doctor has four and another has three, who do you want to operate on?
Well, perhaps we're putting the cart before the horse. Why don't, why don't we call the question here and vote whether we would like to approve the RFP for legal services? And then subsequent to that, we could come up with a process that will be efficient and effective to get your shortlist of qualified candidates. So, Mrs. Chair, can we call the questions, please?
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Brennageli?
Yes.
Mr. Bickert?
Yes.
Mr. Bobalino?
Yes.
Mrs. DeKesch?
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson, sir. Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yates?
Yes.
Denise, to answer your question and then I'll drop it after this. If somebody hits 15 of 20 checkpoints on here, somebody else hits 12 of 20 checkpoints, that person that has 12 might still stand out more to one of us opposed to you. There's different varying opinions on what they're checking off. So, it's hard to say that the top, that have the top total automatically are who we bring in. Because we may feel differently about one of those checkpoints that one person does and somebody doesn't. So, there's a lot of variations as to how you determine who each of us thinks is the most qualified. So, I just think there needs to be some.
But it has to be something that's, you know, not subjective. It has to be something you can document. So, it's not really a matter of opinion. And I think it's really important that the board be completely transparent on this entire process because it is extremely important.
Okay. I?
Do you, I'm sorry to keep doing this. Do you guys have, I have very strange background noise. It's like music playing or something?
No, Scott.
I think that's your neighbor again.
It's your neighbor.
No, there's no one next to me. There's nothing, there's, oh, all right. Go ahead, sorry. It's random noise and I don't know what it is.
I'm going to do, I'm going to do this to you then, after me. I approve the cyber service agreement with Seneca Valley School District. Have a motion, so moved?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this something, is this something we can do in-house or no? Have we done it in class?
So, Seneca Valley partners with Edge Annuity and they have the right through Edge Annuity to kind of parse out the courses. So, instead of directly partnering with Edge Annuity to have an online platform, we go through Seneca Valley because they have consortium pricing. So, that's then our own teachers who follow the process or follow the progress of kids in those courses. So, the only thing we currently use Seneca Valley for is the consortium pricing. It is possible, there are, within that contract, we could ask Seneca Valley to use their teachers, but up to this point, we haven't had to do that.
It's more beneficial to use our own, right?
To use our own teachers?
Yeah.
I absolutely think so.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those who, um, oppose? Okay, I'm going to bundle J, K, and L. J, adopt revised board policy number 622 GA SB Statement 34. It's the second reading. K, adopt revised board policy number 138, language instruction education program for English learners, second reading. And L, adopt a new board policy 142 for migrant students, second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We've talked about these for the past three board meetings. I entertain any questions if there were any.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Kim in a bundle, M, N, and O. M, retired board policy number 120, human development program, first reading. N, adopt revised board policy 112, school counseling, first reading. And O, adopt revised board policy number 123.1, concussion management, first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, human development program is recommended to be retired. It is nebulous and we have no such program here. So, we shouldn't have a policy that would create a legal liability for us. The next one is school counseling. The only thing that's changed since our last reading is the title. And anytime that it did say guidance counseling, it now says school counseling. And concussion management, while there were no changes from the work session, I do anticipate that there will be changes for our second reading. I'm asking our athletic director to make sure that the policy comports with the procedures that we have in place. And we'll also be looking at our, at our AR administrative regulations related to this.
That, I had a question on that. I wanted to make sure where this falls in line across the country from a policy. Would this PSAB, is there guidance from them on this specific, the concussion policy?
Yeah, the only thing in their policy that I amended was, and you can see this when you look at the lined version where I strike things out. I took out the third, it's the very last thing. I'm not looking at it right now, but it's the very last thing in this policy. And it was, if a coach errors and puts a student back in or an athlete back into the game when they haven't been properly cleared after a concussion, they can receive a warning the first time and it articulates what happens to them. If they do it again, it is my recommendation that they be terminated.
She's memorized the entire policy.
I feel rather strongly about that. We kind of downplay concussions when we use the word concussion. It's actually a traumatic brain injury. And it is nothing for us to take lightly. And I don't believe that we have coaches that would do this. So, to me, it's, it's not going to be something we're ever going to have to enact. Everybody can make a mistake. And if a coach truly made an error and didn't have the proper paperwork but thought they did, we can enact the disciplinary measures that are in the policy. But if they do it a second time, they really shouldn't be working with our kids, in my estimation. But that's the only deviation I have from the statewide policy.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye. Sorry.
Any opposition? Okay, I'm going to, P, employ Caitlin Schlapp as a special education teaching assistant at College Square Elementary School, effective February 19th, 2020. Remuneration of $10 an hour for seven hours a day, five days a week.
So moved.
Second.
She's filling an open position.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Kim in a bundle, Q, R, S, and T. Q, employ Nikki Warfield as a varsity high school assistant track coach, effective the 2020 spring sports season. Remuneration of $1,585 for the spring sports season. R, approve adjustment in salary for Amy Haggard, varsity softball head coach, from $3,688 to $5,366, which is an increase of $1,678 for the 2020 spring sports season. S, approve adjustment in salaries for Leah Akara, varsity softball assistant coach, from $2,012 to $2,683, which is an increase of $671 for the 2020 spring sports season. And T, approve adjustment in salary for Butch Russo, varsity softball assistant coach, from $1,676 to $2,012, which is an increase of $336 for the 2020 spring sports season.
So moved. Second.
I think it's important for people to know that these coaches haven't asked for these increases. These are a result of our taking a look at our Title IX compliance and ensuring that we have equity between male and female sports with our coaches.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, I'm going to bundle you and V. U, approve creation of a position of varsity high school assistant, boys tennis coach for the 2020 season at a salary of $1,986 for the 2020 season. And V, approve list of reappointed spring sports coaches and volunteer coaches for the 2020 spring sports season, pending receipt of required clearances and background checks. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Denise, do we not have an assistant coach for the boys tennis now? Or is this an additional assistant coach position?
We do not. We do not have an assistant coach and one needs to be created for equity purposes.
Okay.
During our meeting, our athletic committee meeting, if you remember, you talked a lot about equity.
Yep. When we talk about equity, I just want to make sure it makes sense in the fact that the boys tennis team needs an assistant coach. And that would be, I would assume, determined on the amount of participating players. Versus, I know the girls tennis team has always been a pretty robust program. And the boys team mimics some of the same robustness for it to be, for it to be considered, the need to be considered there? Or are we just?
Yeah, I can answer that. We have, looks perhaps another question or you want to speak to it?
I'm one of the coaches for the girls tennis team. The girls currently have three coaches.
Okay.
The boys only have one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
No, I know. Nobody would. So, that's, I think that's why they're trying to bring it up.
Okay.
We have, on the varsity, it's, there's two coaches and then there's a JV coach. So, there's actually three coaches for that.
And the boys tennis is brightly taken. And do you, the boys mimic that? Because I know JV plays and they do not play the same place that varsity plays. So, is the boys the same way?
I do not believe the boys have a JV team.
Well, it, as a former tennis parent, this might not be accurate, but whenever my sons played, the JV played whenever there were available courts. So, if they were at a place where they didn't have enough courts, then the JV wouldn't have a chance to play. So, sometimes they would play if there's extra time or if they had enough courts. And they would play during our home games, too. But there was a JV section of kids. But there are only a certain number of people who have been playing tennis at one time.
Well, no, I think you're talking about exhibition. That's something different.
Yeah.
You're talking about the exhibition case. And that still happens with the girls. But literally, the girls have a JV team and have a separate JV schedule.
They called themselves JV.
Yeah.
So, so one of, one of the criteria that we would use certainly is the amount of students who are playing. Another thing that we'd want to consider is not putting any of our coaches in a position to travel by themselves. I think it's ideal if we have two adults working with our youth at any one time. And then I think the third thing is the issue of Title IX and how that relates to if the girls team, and this might be the only time where the girls team had more coaches than the boys team. But if the girls team has three coaches, then it doesn't make sense by Title IX requirements for the boys team to have just one.
It's much, it's much needed. It's much needed.
Okay, as long as it, the need's there. I'm just asking the question because I have no idea about that JV tennis, varsity tennis.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, W, approve the process of vendering into a cooperative sponsorship agreement with Western Beaver School District in the sport of wrestling for the middle school and high school program. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
So moved.
Okay.
It's a cooperative agreement. When either side doesn't have enough students to be successful, these types of agreements are struck. So, it's good for our school and good for theirs.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to oppose. Okay, I'm going to bundle X, Y, and Z. X, approve the request for an overnight field trip for three students and one adult to attend Hema Regional Course at Hickory High School in Hermitage School District on February 27th and 28th, 2020. The cost is $162 a person for this trip and is paid from the music department budget. Y, approve the request for overnight field trip for five students and two adults to attend Math Counts State Competition on March 13th, 14th, 2020 in Harrisburg, PA. Cost to the district is $475 plus the use of the school van. Z, approve the request for overnight field trip for four students and one adult to attend the PAFBLA State Leadership Conference in Harrisburg, PA on April 5th through the 8th, 2020. Cost to the district is use of a school van, gas tolls, lodging for advisor, which is $802, and substitute teacher for three days. The estimated cost for the students is $462.50 and is paid for by the student and/or parent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, I'm going to bundle AA and BB. AA, approve a list of substitute teachers for the 2019, 2020, or 2020 school year, pending receipt of required clearances and background checks. And BB? And BB, approve additions to the list of district volunteers.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? CC. Would like to commend Mrs. Susan Medaleski, course director and music department chair, for receiving the FEMA Pennsylvania Music Education Association Citation of Excellence Award. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, um, DD was also added, approve SSM Industries contract, abiding by the terms and conditions of Co-Stores, Co-Stores contract 008-420 for the summer of 2020 renovations as described in section 2.3.2 of the contract, and currently priced at $1,925,000, and subject to final legal review. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
So, this is due from last week. We didn't know if the contractors were to come in and did make it in, so we decided to put it on. It's very similar to the contract you did for Phase 1A. This is Phase 2A.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We gotta do a roll call for this? I'm asking the question.
No, I, I made the face because we have 10% battery. Let's go. Yes, we need a roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Baradalee?
Yes.
Mr. Pickerton?
Yes.
Mr. Bovalino?
Yes.
Mrs. DeCach?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yates?
Yes.
All right.
Is there any correspondence?
No.
Okay, so I'd like to draw your attention to the administrative reports, and now we are at comments from visitors.
Mark Williams, do you have anything to say?
Already, it was discussed.
Great Sean Haywiser?
Yeah, he did.
He already did.
Is there anybody left that still wants to speak? Would that be the better way to go about this? Mr. Longo?
Okay. I talked earlier about a resident of Vanport, Illinois, switch hats, and a former retired NCAA baseball player, and currently a PIA official. One thing brought up here, talk about concussions.
Yes.
Is that prior to them coming, is that during the course of a event, a game, or is that like practice, clear for practice? What was your, the policy that you have in place?
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter where the concussion occurs. If, if the coach is aware of the concussion, then they have to be cleared by a medical professional, and that needs to be done in writing before that they, before they can be back in the game.
Reason I, I wasn't gonna talk about that because I didn't know you had that policy in place, but as officials, we have the right to remove a player from a game and not bring him back in until not the trainer, but a doctor clears him. So, I'm glad that both sides are working on that. One thing I did want to bring up though, tonight, the last meeting, it was brought up that there was, oh, the, it was addressed about putting armed police officers at this school board meeting, okay? Out of the 11, two, four, I went to school errands, so there were two. Eleven of you at that table, and myself is number 12, standing in front of you, the chances of someone getting assaulted on school grounds, being a PIA official, is me. It happened two months ago at Beaver Falls, where an official come out of a game and got cold clawed, okay? Right away, everybody thinks it's Beaver Falls. Well, the gentleman that did it was from Blackhawk, okay? Doesn't matter where it came from, the guy got assaulted. So, I guess my question to you guys as a board, if we're gonna go down this route and have police at these meetings, then we need to have police presence everywhere. That includes sporting events, musicals, concerts, any event that is in this school district needs to be out in police, you know, it's not just one, it's all. Okay? That's the comment I wanted to make tonight, do you have? Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Was there anyone?
10%? You're still good?
You're still good. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak?
Yeah, I still, I was, I did make last month's board meeting, it was on Martin Luther King Day, the next school, and I didn't think there was still gonna be a school board meeting, so that was my fault. But at the first board meeting of this new board, I requested an update on the security progress, and the, the safeties, security committee hadn't met yet, and so I'm assuming they have met yet, so I'm requesting an update.
I actually did give that update at the meeting that you missed.
Okay.
And I would be happy to give you the notes that went along with that, if that would be helpful.
Okay. Yeah, I can definitely, either you could email it to me or review it with you. And then, I would, at the, at that board meeting, I also requested an update on the, that safety committee was convened and what their recommendations that they came up with, and I would like to review those. There was a lot of angst at that meeting as far as need to know information, I think as a concerned parent of this school district. I would warn.
Do we have a, information? Do we have a school safety committee meeting scheduled in the near future?
I don't think we scheduled another one.
Are you the chair?
Yeah. I think I am.
No, Mary Lewis.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Lewis.
Robin is.
Robin is.
Oh, just testing you. Robin is. Sorry, Robin. Yep.
Well, are those open to the public?
Yeah.
Aren't they?
They're open to the public if the attendance is five or more.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. No, they're not.
No, they're supposed to.
Oh.
If, if...
Aaron says they can't be open.
Just has to be publicly displayed, notified if it's five or more. But those are all public meetings, correct?
They can be if they're advertised.
So, all committee meetings are, are public meetings, and safety committee would fall under a committee meeting, so I would agree with that. If during the course of that meeting, there was something that we didn't want the general public to know, which is why the legislature said that it can be part of the executive rules, then we would probably go into executive session right there. I'm not sure exactly how that would occur, but I would assume that that's what would happen. Yes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, one other comment on a different topic. The board meetings are now being videotaped and shown on a news services website. Is there any reason why we can't videotape that as part of the school district and put it on the school district website?
We, we could if we were so inclined, sure.
Okay, because it's one of those, it's a subscription website, and it would be great if the public could view the board meetings from folks that don't have the ability to get that. I know we have a great technology department here, seems like that's something that they could take on.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
Can I, can I piggyback that real quick, if anyone else can speak? I guess this is maybe for Janet. Going alongside what he was talking about with the videos being posted, is it possible to get the agendas put out publicly for the public to know before the meetings? So, like, we get our agenda on Friday for the meeting that's on Monday. Is there a way we could post that via social media or through the website or something like that, so the public can look at what's gonna be taking place on the following Monday?
You would want to, I heard you say yes, Greg. Yeah, you would want to change policy 006 to direct that to happen.
And what's the reason behind it not happening? I don't know what 006 says.
That's the one that says how a, how an agenda is going to be constructed and when you, as a board, are going to get, receive that, which we say is, under most circumstances, it's going to occur on the Friday prior to a Monday meeting. So, if you wanted it to be posted some other place, I would say that's the place you would put it, to direct it to be done.
I think today's probably not the best example, but we had a, a, an addendum, or an added line item.
Right.
In your experience on an annual basis, how frequently does that happen?
That isn't frequent. We don't like to surprise board members.
Yeah.
With any information. This being part of the SSM contracts, kind of ongoing business, I thought that it was appropriate. But certainly, when it, when it came up for discussion, the board could have said, no, we didn't know about it in advance and we're gonna staple it until our next meeting. Sometimes we're struggling to get the contracts to us in time, or we've requested changes to indemnification language, or where the trial would happen if there was a conflict. We want to say, no, it's not in Virginia where you're headquartered, it's gotta be in Pennsylvania. So, when we finally get all that back, that's when we give it to you guys. And so, occasionally, we need to put an addendum on. But I think putting it on as an addendum is also an effort to be a little transparent, to say this isn't something that you have seen before, and so it would be more understandable if we said, we're not gonna go forward with this.
As part of the community, it would be great to have that, and you could even put a disclaimer saying, you know, this could change up until the time of the meeting. But it would have been nice to be able to follow on, didn't it?
Okay, our next scheduled meeting dates are March 9th, 2020, which is our work session in the middle school high school library at 7:00 PM, and March 16th, 2020, which is our voting session in the middle school high school library at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Denise, can I, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Oh, we were, we were just breaking that. Not to nitpick on this, but...
You're going on what?
So, I asked a que, I don't know, like, moving forward, is that, do we just agree that we are gonna post the agenda, or are we gonna put this into a vote, or how do we proceed? I think I got mixed reactions.
I don't think you need to. You put things on Twitter and everywhere else, so.
I have zero problem pasting, or pasting, posting a draft agenda.
Board docs allows you to do that.
It's true. The comment from Director Hill was, board docs allows you to do that, which we do subscribe to. We plan to make a move to board docs for our, for next school year, so probably starting in July. But until then, if that's what the board would like, we can certainly post it.
We don't need a motion, right?
I'm fine with, with adding this to our work session for next month, and we can discuss it there, and then maybe put it forth at the next meeting. Everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Sounds like nobody has a problem if I do it for that session though, right?
Heather was like...
No, correct.
Great.
Good test run.
Great test run.
Police officer.
That's a good question.
Motion that was left on the agenda at the end of the last meeting.
I think it was...
You were given the opportunity to remove it, and you said, no, I wanted to leave it on and I want to vote. So, was it removed?
Well, it wasn't on this, it definitely wasn't on this agenda.
But it was on the last weeks, it should be. According to the last work session, it was on there.
Yeah. I, I honestly think it was left off in error.
Okay.
All those in favor?
I think we adjourned. We're adjourned.